Okay, let me see here. I sent an email. I'll keep it really brief because I will be able to breathe through our meeting today. I sent out a document to you by email that I failed to send the report and I can't really broadcast on here. Let me pass and set up on this other computer over here while Anna goes ahead with her.
Up permissions. Well, collection, the collection department added 764 items. That's pieces which includes books, DVD and CDs, and they withdrawn 326. Also in month June, in the Tronic resources, they added 701 items. That is the same ebooks, the audio books, streaming music and movies, and they withdrawn only two. So our collection department is pretty consistent, you know, putting collections in and taking collections out. And we have some visuals that your presentation, the first.
It wasn't even right. That was just a printed shopping.
Oh, yes, yeah, yes. And the first picture you see that is our garden from the children's department. And the garden, as you can see, is getting bigger and it's also expanded a little bit to the left of there. So that will be to the east, because we got donated some temples. Our maintenance department was shopping temples to the new newly built flower bed. And next to the one, this is Minecraft Mania. That's actually a program the children's department is doing this two days, one in June and one actually today for third and eighth, third to eighth graders to play Minecraft. And the picture here is actually from the television that's over there. If you come in this way, we added two TV one over here in the like a board that the place but and one over at Pat's Cafe. And that's to tell patrons what, you know, things that's going on in the library. So it's another way for us to, I guess, advertise the programs and services that we're offering. And you see the classroom there, there's a lot of people sitting around that. And the gentleman is from the fire department, the Wathegan Fire Department. He was there to train this 12 participant here CPR and ABD training. And at that time we have 12 and we will be expanding that. I think the next training is in August.
Is this staff or anyone?
Oh, just staff. So especially the frontline workers, public facing employees, they will be required to learn that. So hopefully we don't have to use them, but if you need it, it's very helpful. And as you can see, the library, that is a night picture, we added strobe lights outside the library. So at night it should light up there possibly and yes. And then, as you can tell, Isaac had a baby girl. So Isaac is on paternity leave. I don't know how you reach him usually, but he's on the. But the staff we usually put in IT tickets. I don't know how trustees do it. But just so you know, he's, so if you try to reach him, you know, he may have to forward it to the other IT technician.
And the lights, are they, are all the lights gonna be all year? I know the one that's standing on the front, but what about the other ones that are over the the area where the bands and yeah, are those lights gonna be there all year too?
They'll be around all year. They're not lit all year.
Right.
I mean, they're.
But in the winter time also, or just just.
They'll be on with the black folks all over how external lights come on on a timer. They'll join that time, say of the sculpture and all that.
Just out of curiosity, when you weed things out of the E, like two items or something needed from the collection? Are those items we did because of lack of use or did it is someone like actively choosing which ones to add at that?
No, usually when they read it, it's like how many people didn't check it out.
Yeah.
If there's no, if we order item and the usage is slow, then.
Yeah.
But beside the these services, we also subscribe to Hoopla, this usage.
Yeah.
This is really good.
Yeah, there are. I have watched a few on there.
Yeah, that's a by usage.
We have that chair. Sorry about the delay, everybody. Thanks, special thanks Jennifer Cordova for putting this together. Get the lights and see the screen. Sorry about the delay. So again, library services, library has had a busy month from June to July since we last met. And the upper left is the father reading to a child in the children's department inside the tree. There are soft pillows and the soft cushion. And yours truly dressed down and walking the parade route handing out candy to kids and family members. And then in the right hand corner, there's a photograph just a few days ago, Annalisa performing a children's program in the Bradbury Room. And as you can see, well, social distance, maybe shoes sometimes fall off a little kid's feet. Mustn't have such a great program, could have lost the shoes. Right below that, we have Rob and his significant other doing some preparation work for WalkieCon, Wathegan Convention of Comics. In the center panel would be one of our friends of the library, Lynette Wallace. She's participating in a book club sponsored by the library through our reference librarians. And to the left of that is Kim Waller, Madam Monarch Butterfly, as a member of the Learning Experience. She also painted library, gave a presentation about her trips and travels in Cuba. So that was a pretty neat presentation we had in June, early July. Library has been very busy with outreach. So there are no particular order. Bob writing corner is equal hope on June 29th. They came in table at the library. We allow outside organizations to come in and set up a table, talk about their organizations, what they can do for people. So for the left panel, Oak Street Health set up the table as well and shared information, gave away swag. Above that, and children's manager Patrick working with children looks like on making things out of plaster pears perhaps. And then on the right hand side, we have private free health screen. I'm not exactly sure what this one's from, but it's one of our tables they set up outside while Rosalind Franklin is on Clayton Street. And they give away information as well. And a lot of that is Jennifer Cordova is doing as well. She's on the bottom of the community lot. So here's some photographs taken by Jennifer over concert series. This past Friday, we had the Austin Oak Band. Trio. And then we also had some local music fair in the middle. And last but certainly not least, on Saturday, we entertained Lori, the Bo Bean, and the Jet and the Blues Dogs or the Lazy Dog. I think this is the ensemble she played with. They were outstanding, a lot of fun. They engaged the community. And about 25 people show up and it was just the beginning of art walk. So we're participating in concerts every Friday and I want accordingly inviting to attend if you're free and available from 12 to 1. And then on Saturday, the 20th of August, I will invite you all to come back to our walk between four and six. We'll have Kaleidoscope eyes, one of our biggest sellers, but Beatles Band, Beatles cover band playing either on our courtyard. And we'll be celebrating Ray Bradbury's birthday on that day, which is technically, I think, the 22nd is his real birthday. We have an ice cream social partnership with the Wathegan Park.
And that's on the 20th?
And it's Saturday, the 20th. That walk's Saturday. Last but certainly not least, I spoke a little bit about this stuff. I do want to point out if you're ready and willing, we'll check out the information center and kind of see it rolling through stacks over there. Lights beaming down to really catch people's eye. We have these, they call them touch points where we get people's impressions. We share our information. We also have a great big television screen that kind of is constantly scrolling activities at the library and helping people, nice soft seating so people can sit and relax while they wait for their significant other in the restroom. And again, it's a touch point where we want people to come and have an experience and learn about the library. And that is very exciting to see. Also, an Isaac Paddock, lovely girl, which is adorable. So very good news and lots of great stuff happening at the library. I also have something that I have to share. This is July, featured that is where the month of July, Mango Languages. You can learn a foreign language, you can learn how to speak Tyra using your library card. And so this is a.
Who wants to learn a new language? I know I do. But Vanessa, I don't have time or money to learn a new language. Well, my friends, let me tell you about Mango. Mango is an online language learning app and website. It's easy to use and for all types of learners. Mango starts out simple and becomes more challenging as you progress. It also has cultural notes to let you know more about the language. Mango has over 70 languages to choose from. Look at all these chickens. I mean, choices. But Vanessa, how do I access Mango? Your library card is the key. Whether you're at home or at the library, you can create an account using your email address and your library card number. You can also download the app and use it on your phone. If you have any questions for me help, contact us.
Very cool. Yeah. Library card access. Is that only Wathegan library cards?
Correct. And reciprocal, or non-resident, people who pay the non-resident fee. So yes.
John, I have a quick question. Oh, a patron told me the other day that she loves attending your book club. And I didn't know you had a book club here. You've never talked about it in in your services. I was just curious about that.
Um, so we meet once a month. This is usually the second Tuesday of the month. It was a core of people that the previous director ran a book club called I Meant to Read That. And it's books that came out that maybe people hadn't had a chance to pick up yet. So we try and pick relatively new titles. One of the problems with book clubs is getting 10 copies of a book can be challenging, especially when they're brand new or popular. So we were purchasing items for people to use and for the support of this book club. So this book club continues on. We're reading one through Hoopla this month, which is a more affordable and digital way to do. So we'll be reading Plato's Republic. And then moving on to next month, we'll bring more books to people's hands. Not sure what that list exactly entails yet. I don't want to spoil any of the surprises, but soon, soon and very soon. And you're all welcome to come if you'd like to come to our I Meant to Read That book club, second Tuesday of the month.
Yes, it was surprising because I was like, oh my goodness, you've never talked about it in your reports. But she was like, oh my gosh, it's a great, great book club and you do a great job of leading it in this discussion.
It's a great people in our book club and we really have fun.
Do you finish the one book, one month?
One book a month, yes. And so usually we try and fluctuate between fiction and nonfiction. We did a graphic novel. We did a book of poetry. We did a lot of like local Chicago history type nonfiction. Like we read a book about Devil in the White City was one of the previous books. Lots of neat, loveable, local books. And I think maybe for the month of August, if I do tease or spoil, it'd be a Ray Bradbury book. Because that's the first month, then we'll probably pick one about Greentown. Since, you know, that's one of those I've always meant to read, but haven't had an opportunity.
Is that something that's showing up on the TV as something that's taking place down?
Not on the TVs. It's kind of like, it's word of mouth. So we're not really promoting because I don't want a bunch of people to sign up and come grab a free book and then never come. So we're basically on word of mouth. But again, we're not marketing it heavily. Just basically anybody who knows somebody wants to come, anybody's welcome. Just give me a shout or, you know, send an email. We'll be there every Tuesday, first Tuesday, second Tuesday of the month. Thank you.
You finished?
I am.
Well, we're now at all business. Library vehicle. Do you have any information on that? Yes, no, maybe?
We did look into purchasing a new vehicle, but we want to, well, as you know, now cars are super expensive and used cars are also super expensive. So we might just go back to see whether we can read here. Our fan is old. He doesn't have that many mileage on him.
Just needs a new bumper. It's cheaper to buy a new bumper than a new vehicle.
And so is that something that we should probably take?
You know, they can, they can kind of live in the bullpen. If you want to keep them there, they don't, there's no new, no new information about the library side. And as far as the governance calendar, I don't think.
And a new business. Actual budget report for June 2022. Well, June, we have about two months into our fiscal year. And this is a time we get property tax. So we receive 1.1 million dollars in property tax. They asked for 4.6, so we still have a little way to go. And if you see on the third line, we have contribute incomes is 31,680. Us above, most of it, 31,500 is from Joanne Marchnowski. She was very nice to leave us some money in her will.
I was wondering, I had a question. That was my question. I'm like, what's contributed?
Yeah, actually, she left, she passed away about three months, a while back. But you know, they take time to settle her estate. And when they did, we sent us a check, low over 31,000. And then the grand revenue, 27,000 included in there was the 15,000 from the Healthcare Foundation of Northern Whitlock. The 15,000 dollar bonus they gave, not just a gift, and plus the 12,500 in one of the health literacy grants. And the expenses, nothing unusual. We did pay interest on our bonds. So the debt service, 40,000. This interest, we pay in interest twice a year and the principal payment once a year.
So we're like where we should be for the end of the year?
I guess, but we're on the trajectory, yes.
Anybody else have any questions?
We're referring to the donation and the contribution income. We sent them a, let me state or a family or a brother, whatever, a certain amount of something to your appreciation. I'm just curious.
The only communication I have is with the attorney. So we can, we can send something to the attorney that maybe will make a face of the family. But we just found out about about two, three weeks ago, maybe a month ago.
Yeah, the money came directly from the bank. It was some, yeah, we don't have a person contact.
Oh.
I do have contact to the attorney, so I can send them the name.
Yeah, that would be, yeah, that would be, that would be, yeah. Any other questions?
Just a motion to accept the budget report for June 2022.
I'm getting a motion to accept the budget report.
I have motion to accept the budget report.
I'll second. The move by, second by Larry to accept the budget report for two months in June 30, 2022.
You can do it all in favor.
All in favor. Bye-bye. All right. We're in the order. We do not have a president's report because he didn't send me anything.
If I may, before we move on, there is a definition of letter B. We have a reference policy.
I'm sorry.
Oh, it's okay. At the library, we have a reference policy. We're in the process of figuring out which policies are actually required versus, you know. We're set up, a lot of our policies, if you've noted in your review of them, are actually procedures with the main policy attached to them. And I think that we need to make a lot of effort to kind of work on some of these policies that really aren't causes at all. They're just how we set up it. So reference says that we will answer people's reference questions. And that we won't answer questions on medical, legal, or monetary, like we won't sign things for people, sign up for people. So I think we need to morph or change the reference policy to be something more along the lines of a tool for equity that references open to all people of all ages, whether or not residents of the community. I think the policy is right. Like right now, it's only four items and they're kind of mostly three of them are just kind of fluff. So we need to change this policy. I don't think deprecation would probably to eliminate it entirely would be, without a replacement would be, put the cart before the horse. I think we should look at the policy in terms of the net meaning we have to talk about policy, about a replacement rather than completely deprecating and getting rid of it. Because it does still, they can point at and say, we do not offer legal advice. We do not offer medical or interpret medical documentation.
Do you think, maybe we can have this discussion with our next meeting, but do you think that the that it doesn't, or that it needed standalone thing, or do you think those things could be included with like a statement of ethics or?
That's a question. Yeah, I think that's what they need, that kind of treatment. And yeah, to make my tool for accessibility to the public and open access. But yes, I think it could be tied to something like that. Because a lot of the policies, looking at some of the other libraries, they will, in their policy, refer to their procedures that, you know, when, when there's the policy and see the ethics statement, code of ethics from the LA or see this document, it's all part, they're linked within the policies themselves. And instead of a policy that's downloadable, it's a living action or breathing document that lives on the website that basically is a webpage. The policies are all right there out in the open, but it's not like a PDF you can download. Heading that way. I think reference does need that treatment.
Now, I'm at the theater before.
Rob did share an email. I have a document here that basically was the committee of the whole report essentially, and I don't know if this is the right place for it. But basically that at the committee in the whole meeting, we discussed patron point contracts, which was approved. And it'll give us the ability to online library card sign up, et cetera, approving of the hipular. And then Jean's Policy Committee, the whole, talked about EDI, media relations, photography, credit card and reference policy. And I think again, it would be prudent to reconsider the reference policy, the nature of the deprecated. Finance and facilities, we viewed the check detail and the motion to approve was had. And then Development Committee, we discussed retreat homework. You'll watch what takes video number one. Other than that, there were announcements from Carl or from Rob that we'll ask Carl about the Bradbury, Bradbury collection. I think he'll be into that toward the end of the meeting. So that's, that's what I have come out.
I asked him about this upcoming meetings. I didn't know where it was, other than he said, I'll select you, remind you, it's a reminder. August the 3rd, maybe the whole and regular board meeting on 17th of August. Communication for my own.
I just have two things for you folks tonight. First, our next bargaining session is Tuesday, the 26th at 8 o'clock with Ask Me. Haven't received anything yet in advance for that. So if I get an email, I'll share it with the bargaining team members. I'll probably always say this, hopefully the next meeting will be productive. That doesn't mean that we haven't had any progress, but it's just, as things go along, you hope that they'll roll that ball down the hill and it's getting bigger and bigger and it just keeps going to the, in a quicker fashion than what we seem to be doing now is pushing that ball up to the top of the hill. And it's just a very slow process. Now we need to understand, break the gravity to start moving forward. And we'll get there. But it doesn't seem to me to be a group that is ready to move as quickly as they could be, but it is their first go around. You know, this isn't like you've got an experienced bargaining group that you expect, okay, that contract's done. All we're going to deal with is money. No, we got to deal with the bulk of the contract and the perspectives. One set of table versus the other as to what should go in that contract are different. Is that a clear mistake? And one group wants to run the organization. The other group has the authority to run the organization or to give it over to the other side and say, well, you're not very bright. So we're going to keep working and we will get there. It's just slow. So I know it's going to be frustrating for more, you know, why don't we have a contract? It's just a slow process. My job is to not slow it down. Okay? My job is to work with you to get a contract as soon as we can on the best terms. So that's, that's a direction we're going. That's the easier one than the second one I have to deal with. I think it was several weeks before the last meeting, two or three weeks before the last meeting that had had the communication from the attorney for the Historical Society. And we had responded and still take the position that you don't have the authority to just donate it. You've got statutory requirements of how you go through disposing of property. This is personal property. You got to follow your statute. And the attorney for the Historical Society basically said, Carl, that you don't know what you're talking about. Said it case, which is inapplicable. And but I, I, to be fair, had another attorney in the firm look at both. And he came back and not just because my name's on the wall, because everybody in my firm was told, you have to be able to come into my office and tell me I'm wrong. But if you can't do it in the office, what good are you to be elsewhere, elsewhere dealing in? And if I'm wrong, I will admit it, but you got to prove it. And that's the rules of my office. That should be the rule of every one of the offices within my office as well. So we're pretty certain that the opinion we gave months ago is a correct one. The loan is no problem. We thought we were pretty close on the terms of the loan agreement. And then it just has stopped. And they went back to the track of giving to us. And that surprised us because that was what, three years, so months, four months after the last meeting where they were going to run it by their counsel and I thought we were pretty much there on the loan agreement. That didn't happen, unfortunately. One of the other concerns I had is their attorney is from the same firm that we had just gotten that week, noticed that our firm has, you know, settled this case on behalf of the library. So I had a little bit of a problem with the firm that was representing the library and defending a case than representing the Historical Society adverse to your interests. And I mentioned that and I haven't heard anything since. And I would have expected to at least have gotten acknowledgement. We'll look into it or no, we're fine. And, you know, that case is done. We have no other case, whatever the might be the situation. But I didn't hear any of that. Long story short is, I don't know what to do next. I don't think it's appropriate to be dealing with the attorney that communicated with us because that firm does represent the library. I don't know if you've got other cases that they're still actively working on. Or is that, was that the last active?
I was told that we would have resolution in letter form, but I've received.
Okay, so it's.
They may still be representing.
So I guess it would be inappropriate for me to contact the group that we had dealt with and the committee for both sides because this attorney has reached out. So I would turn to, you know, somebody around this table to say, who has some good contacts that can reach over to the Historical Society and say, what's going on? Are we going to go forward with the loan or not? And let's get back together. If we are, if we're not, then this library board needs to, you know, take a step back and look at the Great Bradbury Collection. They say, is there something else we want to do with it? And what's the best way to go about it? And what's the best way to go about using? I, I just don't know anything else. I, I expect that they still want to have it. They want to display it. I don't know what the construction schedule is or how the remodeling is going. If any of you do, that would be great.
Doesn't look like there's anything going on over there. Does anybody?
They're still in a planning phase. I received, I signed up for a page song there progress. So as, as of yet, they were basically like sharing, sharing plans with architects and with the group in the county and the city. But nothing, nothing set us down, no, no breaking of ground or no date.
So there, no rush.
But I will just say that and it's puzzling to me because when we went into all this, we discussed it here in our board meetings from ten months ago. I recall hearing from the historical society that there was an urgency resolving this because they were going to, their, their funding for the exhibit and donors and all these issues intended to find a quick resolution and I totally call that and so it just poses me that there's a still没going on.
But they want to be using the Bradbury to get the funding, the collection? Using that as collateral to get funding? I mean, that's, I mean, that's what it sounds like if they.
I don't think so. And it's not their asset to put up against it, so.
But if they had it, that's what they would be using, because that might be why.
They wouldn't be able to do it with a loan arrangement because they don't have the title to it. They just have use authority. So they will, they will use that for collateral without the library's participation. Which I wouldn't recommend you. Well, that's, you know, Carl doesn't really have any report other than we're working on the contract. We'll get there. The relationship is fine. So I don't want you to think that there's, you know, animosity going back to the gun stable. It's not. It's just a learning curve. We'll be fine. So if anybody here has a good contact or whether Rob wants to contact somebody from the historical society, that's probably the next best step. I figured you might have an ability to do that. So let's see if that channel works. Thank you. Yeah. Any questions or anything else?
Next, it's time to nominate officers for the library.
Renewing appointment changes?
Not that I know of. There's only one that I know of, actually, right?
I, I would be, I am interested in serving against treasurer.
But you, I understand you can only do it two years in a row.
Really?
Yeah.
Is that right? And you, you, that is from our bylaws, isn't it?
That's what I've been instructed. I know that was when they were doing the president before, it was only a whole, just two years. So do you have any nominations for president? I nominated Rob. I told him. No, he told me he was interested.
He's still interested.
Yeah, he's still interested. I do talk to him.
All right, I'll second.
Do we need to do seconds on these in verse?
You can do it however you want. Actually, if you want to do a slate, if you want to do individual ones, like you started with. You can say, is anybody else besides Jean wanting to nominate anybody besides Rob? Does anybody else got suggestions for somebody?
Anybody else got suggestions? Vice President?
Steve the Vice President now?
Secretary.
Oh, you're the Vice President.
Did you want to continue to serve in that role?
Sure. I'll nominate Jean.
That leaves us with treasurer.
I nominate Steve for treasurer.
Steve?
Yeah, for treasurer.
You don't learn to start being. Okay, and then secretary.
Okay.
I think you have leadership.
Anybody else have any other nominations to be?
So if there's no others, then let's do it this way, if you don't mind, Jean. A motion to have the officers be Rob President, Jean Vice President, Steve Treasurer, and Nathan Secretary. If somebody wants to make that motion.
I still move.
A second.
Then move by Captain, seconded by Larry. Have Rob President, Jean Vice President, Steve Treasurer, and Nathan Secretary. Vote.
Do the roll call and then.
Rebecca?
Aye.
Nathan?
Aye.
Captain?
Aye.
Very tight. Jean?
Aye.
So we any trustee comments?
Walking in tonight, I was admiring the garden, all the flowers at the side of the library, the north side of the library. They're very beautiful and kind of like the water is what I would call a parkway. Yes, kind of a parkway, but they're very beautiful.
Bringing the monarchs too.
Are they wonderful, wonderful?
Yeah, I saw one the other day.
Captain?
Thomas? Oh, I have, no, thank you for running this tonight.
Nathan?
Congratulations, sorry. He's able to enjoy a good time.
Rebecca? I don't have any comments. I have a question. What happened to the friends in the library? How come they don't come talk to you anymore?
So I've been speaking with Rob about every other month, bringing the friends and the foundation back into our agenda. For the pandemic months, there wasn't much for them, much room. We were trying to get things straightened up in terms of our own house orders, so to speak. So now that we are and we're on a pretty decent track, I mean, we're going to get done today before an hour, which is really great. We could probably bring them back in. I would need to talk to you and Rob to find, find out when we want to start doing that. Maybe in the fall, starting about September with friends and that's National Library Card Sign Up. But also Friends in the Library Week is in November, so we can allow them to give a presentation on their records. And then the next month, the foundation, every other month, the groups represented at our board meetings when we're ready. And the regular board meeting began rather than the committee. Because we, we ran into some time constraints here with these library board meetings. They were, some of them quite long, two, three hours long. And so we tried to curtail that. We kind of trimmed a little bit of, so we took them from Jeff and kind of bringing them back in a reasonable way is, I think, the prudent thing to do.
I don't have anything else. Anybody else? Anybody got anything else they want to say?
I'm on. I moved to adjourn.
To adjourn the meeting at seven, seventeen. Larry?
Aye.
Captain?
Aye.
Nathan?
Aye.
Rebecca?
Aye.
Jean? Anna?
Carl.
Great, thanks, everyone.